12th, 2022 at 9:00 a.m. I would now like to call this meeting to order and ask that you please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for allowing us to come together as a family to do what is right for this community. Lord, we ask that you please bless us with wisdom. Please bless us with all of the strength and the intuition that we need to fix the issues that are before us and to do what is best by the people, that your name be glorified in all that we do. We thank you for all these things. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, on to item three. Item three, a motion finding that the advanced posting and notice requirements of Article 8.1200 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas, have been met in relation to all minutes and pending ordinances and resolutions on this agenda, and that the reading of such items be confined to the captions as are agreed upon by the ordinances and resolutions. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I have a motion, a second and a third. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. On to item four, citizen comments. At this time, comments will be taken from the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker. Your comments are appreciated. As the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda, your comments will be duly noted by the council and forwarded to the appropriate department for prompt consideration. A member of the audience that desires to speak during the city council's consideration of any specific agenda item is requested to notify city staff prior to the start of the meeting. At this time, the first name that I have on my list is Mr. Tim Pruitt. Please come forward, sir. State your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Timothy Pruitt. I live at 4439 West Brown Avenue. I have been a resident, I bought my residence in 2002, and I actually own my residence on Brown. Obviously, I worked for the City of Orange for 32 years. I'm a sergeant and currently in code enforcement under Kelvin Knopf. At the time that we purchased my house, we're 16 foot above sea level. We're in flood state C. There was no flood insurance needed, so we didn't have it. And in 2021, we got rezoned as A. The streets have always flooded, but never the houses. It drains to the north into a canal that runs behind Cypresswood east, and it goes an S through the new Chevron property. Constant, we've always had sewer issues with the lift station. One or two of the pumps were always down after the rain, and there's always raw sewage down the street. The city would come out and actually put lime in just the smell. And even since Cypresswood addition was put in in 2015, we noticed that there was slower drainage from our street because our street's at the north, and that's the last part before it goes into the canal. And this is a concern with the high abnormal water. Only time we actually flooded was during Harvey, and we took three foot of water then. We understand that was abnormal rain. But Mr. Ballard, who lives, and he's deceased now, he lives across the street, or did, and he had never flooded in 60 years of actually being there. So the recent rain that we had is what brought our concern. In 7-1, and this is where I have the photos, the water did not rescind even after three hours of the rain. And that was a concern, and my neighbor, right next to me, he actually got water in his garage, which is very concerning because he doesn't have flood insurance. So I've actually met with James Ingram, the Director of Public Works, and he said, as of the third, the pumps were, the lift station was repaired. One had a leaky seal, and the other one did not even have the actual blade inside the pump, so it was actually, the rotator assembly was replaced. We know of a grant, the CDVG grant that was issued, and that the city will be working on the culverts that run from our neighborhood and back under towards Cypresswood. And it's set, the engineering was actually done in 2020, and it was set to be done at the end of this year. They're going to put four by four, four by five big culverts, two of them. So that is going to alleviate some of that pressure. Ingram has also met with Mike Markantel, who's the manager over street and drainage, and they determined that the canals are in bad condition. They need to be cleaned out, and there's actually beaver dams that are blocking the drainage on 105 and actually underneath the road. And he is actually, Ingram is supposed to meet with Drainage with County this Wednesday about the drainage behind Cypresswood, which is actually on private property. So it is a concern, and hoping you guys will look into it.
Thank you, Mr. Pruitt. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lord.
Okay, next we have Ms. Natalie Pruitt.
Thank you. It's Natalie Pruitt, and it's my husband will live at 4439 Brown. I really just signed up to make sure he finished in three minutes. I don't have too much to add. Other than, I just want to thank you guys first for serving our city. And I want to take the opportunity to say thank you so much for the citizens, the love that you have for our community, for our citizens, and for the godly wisdom that you use to lead our city. We did not even know that the mayor was aware of our situation the other day when it rained. My husband called me and said, hey, the mayor's outside in our neighborhood. That right there is amazing, and I just want to say thank you so much. Thank you all so much. We don't know what the solution is here, but we're hoping, coming to you guys and just asking for some help. As a neighborhood, I know the people that we have in our neighborhood, we're willing to do whatever we can to even help to keep our safe, you know, our homes safe. So thank you so much, and we look forward to working with you guys and hoping to get it resolved.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Mr., won't say it right, Austin Gillory. Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name's Austin Gillory. I live at 4433 West Brown Avenue. Like Mr. Tim was saying earlier, I'm sure he passed the pictures around. I got water in my garage, actually, during the little rain that we had. I'm not exactly sure what the deal to fix that would be, but, you know, like they said, I'm willing to do whatever it takes. It's a little scary. I'm a first-time home buyer. We've lived in our house for eight months now, and I don't have flood insurance. So I was a little worried when I seen water coming in the garage when I got home, you know? You know, my wife couldn't even get back to the house. We have a car that sits kind of low to the ground, and we were worried that it would flood out on the streets. There was water all the way across the streets. Other than that, you know, that's really all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council at this time? Before we move on, and also thank you for speaking, and also thank you, Mr. Ingram, for working with him. He means a lot. Thank you, sir. Okay, when we want to say the announcements, Mr. Koontz? Or, I'm sorry?
Chief Bilbo.
Chief, Chief Bilbo.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. As you can imagine, the face of the Orange Fire Department is slowly changing. We're starting to fill some gaps. The first gap I filled about, well, I guess I asked you about three weeks ago. This is starting your third week in the fire department, or in the, in the Fire Marshal's office. I approached Randy Ener. He's a 30-year veteran of the Orange Fire Department. He's been a battalion chief for seven years. The reason why he was my go-to man for the Fire Marshal's position is because whenever I got hired on, he was the Fire Marshal at the time. He also worked, you know, we all have extra jobs. He also, his extra job was working for Care Fire Extinguisher, where they did the fire extinguisher maintenance. They did, they planned and installed alarms. They did hood extinguisher systems and all that. So he has a vast amount of knowledge about those systems. He was a very efficient and effective Fire Marshal back then, and I look forward to working with him. Initially, I asked him if he would just kind of come in on a temporary basis and just get us through the summer, get the schools inspected, get all the high priority items done, and so that we could kind of keep things going. And after about a, about a week and a half, or I guess you told me last week, he said, you know, he just kind of, you're going from a 24-48 schedule to Monday through Friday, eight to five, you know, it's a big change. And he actually came up to me, and he's like, you know what, me and my wife kind of like the schedule. I kind of, it generated something else in him. And he was like, you know, if it works into your plans, I would like to stay in Fire Marshal's office. I'm like, little did you know, that was my plan the whole time. I was hoping that would happen. So Randy's got us covered on that. And then last week, we, well, week before last, we did interviews for the deputy chief's position. We got four applications internal, we got four external. Fortunately, we were able to keep it, keep it inside the department. I was, I was excited to see that so many guys applied from inside the department. And Peyton Smith, he's been with the department for 13 years. He's been a battalion chief for four, which is kind of reflective of our department. We've got a bunch of younger guys. There's a big gap between me and down towards Peyton. And Peyton is just, he is, he's just jumping in it with two feet. Feet first getting after it, and I'm going to rub his nose in it. So anyhow, this is Randy Ener, your new Fire Marshal.
Nice to meet you.
Peyton Smith, your next deputy chief.
All right.
Honey, how are you? Hot, a little bit hot. It comes hot and heavy, and then it's gone. It's like, oh, man, my garden, I'm liking this. You still have a garden, or is it all dried up?
Okay, Mr. Trainor?
Yes, so Mayor, just a few comments as a follow-up to our spectacular July 4th event that was held recently. I want to acknowledge our CVB staff, including Leann Dallas, Brandy Judee, and Hillary Grabett, and all of the city departments and the resources that make it possible. You as a council in terms of approving the budget, spectacular turnout without a major incident, which we're so thankful for. But just a few comments in terms of, it all begins with the budget that you as a council approved to give us what we need to make it work. Especially want to thank Westport Marine, one of our support partners, because it kind of separates it from the Riverside Pavilion, and last year, we had to move it to the Riverfront Pavilion. But with the support of Anon, who is the site manager at Westport Marine, and getting it in a safe area where we can shoot above the Sabine River and have a brush truck and the support staff available to us with the Fire Department, Orange Police Department, and all the departments that play a very important role in supporting our staff to make this happen. But it was a spectacular event, and most thing, the thing that we're most thankful of it was without a major incident. And that's what our commitment is every time we host an event, is to go in and try to manage it to a point where it's a fun, family atmosphere without a major incident. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay?
One more.
One more, Mayor.
One more? Okay.
Good morning. I wanted to let you know that I had gone to the National Community Development Association Conference in St. Paul, Minnesota, and I learned a lot of things there. I got a lot of good ideas for our upcoming consolidation plan, but after talking to several of the cities, there's a few things I wanted to bring to your attention. Number one, most planning directors in the cities don't do near the job that Kelvin does. They were surprised at how involved he is and all the things that he brings to our city. Talking to code enforcement of the different cities, they were surprised how many houses that we have been able to take down and all the cleanup that we're doing in the city. They were very impressed with that. City council, there were several cities, smaller than us, equal to us, larger than us, that had a city council of 13 to 17 people. Now, you can imagine the problems that they have having that many people on city council. I was telling them, you know, how smooth our city council runs. They were very impressed with that. There were several cities where the city manager and the city attorney were under fire for taking monetary kickbacks, giving people what they want. So we're very fortunate with that. Lastly, there was a city whose mayor, one, based on his platform being no new development, and his campaign speech, and I quote, said, well, we don't want certain groups coming in, because if they open a restaurant, well, then their friends are going to start coming too.
What?
And the city was behind him. They elected him as mayor. I was just completely floored with that. So everybody needs to give themselves a hand and a pat on the back because we are way above and beyond some of these other places. So, and then I also wanted to say that we were recognized for our contribution to the National Community Development Association Week poster that they put out this year. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rita, for that update. I know some of that was probably crazy for you to have to see, but it's wonderful when we can have team members who are traveling and being able to learn new experiences, as well as share what we do here and learn what we don't want to have happen here. And thank you once again to Kelvin Knopf, because we already knew, we already knew how awesome you were, bro. And then now they just confirmed it, so thank you for all you do.
Yes. You know, I drove around last Tuesday before the planning and zoning meeting. Mike and I drove around town just looking at different properties and things that were coming up on the agenda, things that have been on the agenda. And there is a visible difference, Kelvin, Tim.
Yes.
What's being done, and, you know, that just confirms it, but, but we can see it. So thank you so much.
I concur what she says. Thank y'all.
It's awesome when you drive by a house and you see that orange paint, I'm like, boom, there it is. Boom, another one, you know? So thank y'all. Thank you. Okay, we will move to item six, consent agenda. June 14th, 2022, Planning and Zoning Commission Special Call Meeting Minutes. June 14th, 2022, Orange Economic Development Corporation Meeting Minutes. And June 28th, 2022, Regular City Council Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Motion passes. On to item seven A, consider an ordinance of the City of Orange, Texas, amending the City of Orange official zoning map, a part of Chapter 12, Planning and Zoning of the 2,000 Revised Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas, by changing the zoning classification of former lots four, five, and six in block number four of Starlight Edition, an addition in Orange County, Texas, according to the map or plan thereof, recorded in Volume Two, page 36, map records of Orange County, Texas, that are now incorporated into Lot One, Orange Valley subdivision, recorded in Volume 14, page 22, of the map records of Orange County, Texas, from CS Commercial Special Zoning District to M U Z D, Mixed Use Zoning District, and providing a development plan for the district, providing for an effective date, providing a severability clause, and repealing any ordinance in conflict with this ordinance to the extent of such conflict. Mr. Knopf?
This is a resounding request by the property owner that owns the property between Starboats and the City Water Tower on 16th Street, and they would like to put in an auto lubrication center, a very nice auto lubrication center. And so there was a public hearing held last week with the city council and Planning and Zoning Commission on this resounding request. And then after the public hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted five to one to recommend that the city council approve the resounding request.
Okay. All right, so we have a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion from Mr. Burge, his second, from Mr. Childs? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Knopf. Okay, item seven B, which is an addendum. Consider an ordinance of the City of Orange, Texas, authorizing the suspension of the effective date for an additional 90 days beyond the August 5th, 2022, effective date proposed by Energy Texas Incorporated, in connection with its rate increase application entitled, "Application of Energy Texas Inc. for Authority to Change Rates," filed on July 1st, 2022, authorizing participation with the Energy Texas Incorporated service area, city steering committee hiring of experts, authorizing the city's participation to the full extent permitted by law at the Public Utility Commission of Texas, requiring reimbursement of municipal rate case expenses, finding that the meeting complies with the Open Meetings Act, making other findings and provisions related to the subject, and declaring an effective date. Mr. Koontz?
Mayor, Council, good morning. This is the first reading. As a request, or advisement, I should say, from the Alton Law Firm, as they always do, they review these certain things for us, but again, this would be just the suspension of the effective date for 90 days for the rate increase application from Entergy with the state.
Okay. All right, definitely want to support that. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. On to item eight A, consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number two with T. Johnson Industries Incorporated for the Westside Waterline Phase One project. Mr. Ingram?
Morning, Council, Mayor. This is a second change order to actually complete this project, so that we can move on to Phase Two, which will be funded by ARPA. It's a necessary cost to actually connect the line to complete the loop.
Okay.
I recommend it.
Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Ingram. And once again, thank you, Mr. Ingram, for working with the fluids and getting that out there and taking care of it. I really, really appreciate it. Item nine A, consider a motion awarding the bids for demolition and removal of substandard structures as follows. Address, 1209 Third Street to Man Shack and Sons for $5,500 in three days. 2001 Tenth Street to Man Shack and Sons for $5,500 for three days. 1309 Fourteenth Street, Man Shack and Sons for $5,500 for three days. 2912 Seventeenth Street, Man Shack and Sons for $5,500 for three days. 801 Adams Street, Man Shack and Sons, $5,500 for three days. 603 Middle Street, Man Shack and Sons, $5,500 for three days. 824 Moss Street, Man Shack and Sons, $7,500 for three days. And 4201 A Y Oak Road, Man Shack and Sons for $7,000 for three days. Mr. Knopf?
Yes, we went out for bids on these properties, and five contractors requested bid packets. However, only one contractor submitted a bid, and he submitted a bid for each of the properties. So this contractor's done work for the city before. They've done excellent work for us, and we would recommend that you award the bid to this contractor.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion, second and a third? Mr. Burge?
Well, I have a question.
Okay, no problem. Questions or comments?
Yes, I have a question. In the past, we've approved these structures to be torn down, and they've been sold, and then we see these people that they purchased them come before us wanting us to not tear them down. Is there anything that can happen after we approve this that they cannot be sold to these people? You follow what I'm saying? We've had two or three instances where we've...
Where they've been sold after they've been ordered demolished.
Yes, and then we see these people asking us not to tear them down. Well, we can, we have to tear them down.
Oh, that's true.
So...
Yeah, once, unless they appeal the demolition order within 30 days.
Right.
Then the demolition order stands, in most cases.
I mean, I want to approve all this, but I'm just was asking a question. Can we stop them from being sold after we approve this?
Yeah, what we can do is just advise people that before they ever contemplate buying property, come talk to us, because then we can advise them that, hey, this is under a demolition order, because sometimes the seller does not disclose.
Absolutely.
And then, you know, the owner, you know, possibly could have some legal action against the seller because they didn't do full disclosure, you know, to let them know that it was under a demolition order.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great recommendation. It's like, it's, it's not on us, but they need to come to us before they purchase anything.
Yes.
Yeah, before they do anything with property. Buy it, sell it, develop it, tear it down, put it in the business, change the use, whatever. Come talk to us first, because we can help them avoid a lot of heartache.
Yeah, losing a lot of money.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for the question, and thank you for the response.
I have a suggestion possible. Is it possible for us to put some type of something in the, in the newspaper of how we actually do business like that, where they can be offered, okay, if you could come, this is what we do when it comes to demolition in the city, and this is what we encourage you to do if you are looking for property, if you are thinking about purchasing property? Is it a way that we can possibly do something like that? And then we have to put, put it out there, not just assume that people should automatically come to us, because you just may not know to come to the city for that information.
I would just like to comment that I think Kelvin and code enforcement do an excellent job in providing information to property owners that have dilapidated structures and work through a, in the state of Texas, property rights are very important, so we have a very intense process that has to be gone through, and I think when what we find is, notwithstanding the very hard work of your code enforcement officers and your planning director, people, we, we can't stop, council member, someone from filing a lawsuit to try to block a kind of a demolition, and therein lies the problem. We, we must deal with the judicial system that gives people certain rights, but I believe that all along in the process, property owners are given detailed information when their property comes forward with a dilapidated structure. They give them a laundry list of items to repair, and so we're also a recordation state in Texas where people are obligated to know what is of record, and if a demolition is begun and recordation is filed, property owners, and well, it's third parties buying property, are having an obligation to take and know what that property condition is at the time they buy it. So I think that they do an excellent job in providing that as far as working with the property owners, but if the interest is to just take something together for the general public, not someone who's actually looking to buy a property or owning a property, trying to get rid of it in a dilapidated stage, there is a lot of information out there that your planning staff has available, but I, I think Kelvin has done a wonderful job in, with the planning group, as well as others, in bringing training sessions to, to your committees about these processes that they go through. But certainly, anything the council wants, I'm sure that the staff will be happy to get together, but I, I think they should be applauded for the work they do.
Oh, definitely, definitely.
And one thing we have done is painted on the buildings that have been ordered demolished, City of Orange Demolition, to let a potential buyer who may be driving by and say, hey, I want to buy that, at least let them know if they were to go look at the property, hey, this is under a demolition. So we have done that step.
Yes.
And then with these bids, this, this will be 44 structures in this fiscal year that we will have torn down.
That's awesome.
I think the department does a fantastic job.
Yes, that's awesome.
But I was just wondering if it was something we could do, even on our website or something when it comes to demolitions?
We actually have on the website, you know, advise people to come talk to the planning and, planning department, you know, before they do anything with property. So we actually did put that on the website.
That's fantastic.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I want to say thanks for the CO, the community of CO, as we all know, they were, felt neglected, and now they don't. They, there's, that Dupont Drive is looking so good. We've got the park, we've got the new businesses, we've got the demolitions. Just, it's looking wonderful. So thank you so much, and it's moving in the right direction, and they're thankful.
Well, the council really stepped up and provided us with the resources in this fiscal year to allow us to do a whole lot more than what we have been able to do in the past just because of the lack of resources. So we really appreciate the council, you know, and all the dedication of resources that you've given to our efforts.
Yes, thank you. And something I'll do too, I'll also reach out to Ms. Fisher on my own and just see if we could just get them to print a piece of paper where they have the houses that are on auction in their cabinet and say, if purchasing a house, please contact the City of Orange before doing so.
Yes.
Well, maybe we can see if she'll help us out with that.
That's great.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve? We did, we had a second. Okay, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Knopf.
Thank you.
Consider a motion authorizing funding for the following public service organizations in the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program. Greater Orange Area Literacy Service, $7,000. Jackson Community Center, $7,000. Julie Rogers Gift of Life, $5,000. Build Her, $1,412. Orange Community Action Association Meals on Wheels Program, $14,000. Southeast Texas Hospice, $7,000. Stable Spirit, $7,000. Voice of Hope, $1,000. Total CVBG Public Service Recommendations, $49,412. Ms. Monson, okay?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I need to recuse myself on this issue.
Okay, thank you.
Um, yes, we met with the CAC. We had twelve applicants this year for funding. We had all of the applicants come, and they did a presentation for the CAC. These were the eight that they felt needed to be funded this year. Our budget was cut four and a half percent, so it made it a little trickier on that. But does anybody have any questions?
Yes, so is this the, the $49,412, that's the full amount that's available?
Yes.
Okay, and the reason why, I was gonna ask if there was anything else available. One of the programs that I wanted to possibly add to was the Orange Community Action Association Meals on Wheels, for I've spoken with several of the directors over there. And you know, just as we all see ourselves, the cost of groceries has, has definitely increased. And so with them feeding the senior citizens and the elderly, if there was a way for me to give a little bit more, I was gonna ask for council to approve that. But if we're at our threshold or at our limit, I understand.
Yeah, with the CDBG grant, fifteen percent is allotted to the public services. We did increase Meals on Wheels this year because we, we knew that, you know, how much more they were feeding than, than they had been.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, but we wanted to give everybody a little bit more due to the cost of living. So as you can see, they do get more than anybody else does.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. It was just a conversation and some things that I definitely felt like we needed to try to do, but thank you for doing that already.
Absolutely.
Okay, do we have any questions or comments from Ms. Monson?
I just have one question. Is the Southeast Texas Hospice, is that enough? Is there any, any way we can squeeze a little more for that and Meals on Wheels?
Well, she said we were at our limit, that's our limit.
That's our limit.
Yes, ma'am. Now, you can open up your wallet, you know, anytime.
That's right.
Big Daddy Warbucks down there, you can open it up.
And we did also, we have two new agencies that are starting out that are really gonna end up doing some good things. So you see, they only got a little bit, because this is their first year. They've got to kind of prove themselves. We hope in the future that, you know, our budget will go back up and we'll be able to increase everybody even more.
Well, the reason I asked about the, the hospice is I've had the unfortunate pleasure of being with two pounds.
I have two.
So, it's tough.
Yeah, and we did increase them also. Everybody got increased this year.
That's great.
That's wonderful, thank you so much.
I appreciate the committee's work on that. I know it couldn't have been easy.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a motion in a second?
Make a motion.
Can we have a motion from Ms. Salter, a second from Ms. Henigan? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna? Oh, you can't, sorry.
Recuse.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
And I will say aye as well in her absence.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Item 9C, thank you, Ms. Monson. Item 9C, consider a motion appointing Mr. Woody Cox to the Orange Convention and Business Bureau Advisory Board for a two-year term, specified dates of July 26, 2022 through July 26, 2024.
So Mayor, council, regretfully, Mr. Woody Cox wasn't able to be with us this morning because of a scheduling conflict. He's an educator with the LCM School District. However, we are pleased that he did submit his application. I've known Mr. Cox for a number of years because I'm in the Kiwanis Club, and he's been the key club sponsor for a number of years out at LCM. So we feel he'll be a great fit for our board, and he's definitely eligible to serve. So subject to your approval, we'd like to get him in line and begin his service on July 26. I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
I'd like to make a motion. I know Mr. Cox, and I think he's a, he's a good grab for us.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, second and a third? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Ba, Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And Mr. Cox is also providing like a weekly update on his Facebook of the major renovations taking place at Little Cypress High School right now. Lot of things going on out there, wonderful, and happy to see another school. Both school districts are just growing and, and building new buildings and adding on, and that's big for us. Because one of the biggest things that people don't realize is when we go to ask these businesses to come to our city or we want these chemical plants to build here, one of the first things that people with children ask is what's the school districts like? And so for us to have better school districts, people will be more, and it's more inviting for them. So happy to see that. Okay, thank you, Mr. Trainant. Onto city manager report, Mr. Coons?
No report.
No report? No vacation report?
No report.
No report, all right. All right, Mr. Burge?
I just want to still say thank you to Kelvin and Mr. Pruitt and his, for all the hard work y'all do, continue to do. Thank you.
So I just wanted to reach out and say thanks to Mike Coons, the Parks Department, and the Police Department for addressing the vandalism at Northway Park so quickly. I was amazed at how quickly it was fixed, and now we're taking measures to make sure it doesn't happen again. So thank you.
Thanks to Kelvin for all of his work. The COE is looking great, we love it, it's a good thing. Also, thanks to all the city staff. The July fireworks were fabulous. I mean, if you didn't attend, you missed a good one, you gotta go. Try Oktoberfest, they'll give you a hint of it, and then come again on July the 4th. So, good job, city, good job.
Okay, all right, Ms. Salter?
Uh, I just want to say also, thank you for all that you do. Thank you, Ms. Monson, for going there and bringing us back some great news and how, and telling us how well we're doing. And I want to say, welcome to your new positions. I know you're gonna have a fantastic opportunity, and, and so thank you for all that you do, for the fire department, thank you, chief. And there will be a, I'll be able to say it again, but there will be a back-to-school event at the Riverside, Riverside Pavilion on July 30th, and then there will be one the same day at the Lions Den Park. So just wanted to let you guys know about that. Thank you all.
Congratulations, Mr. Smith and Ms. Ender. I'd like to see my fire department continue to grow.
That's wonderful.
Uh, as far as the rain we had last week, was contacted by several people, but the main two was, for Mr. Ingram, Jerry Chance on Hickory Drive says the ditches on Ashton are stopping the ditches from Hickory Drive from draining. And then I have Clarissa Hensley at 6304 Hazelwood. Hazelwood's always been a problem for my area.